Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our June 20, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Mason County Commissioners. I will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance if Mr. Tom Davis would please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk would please report the, or take the role.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Jeffries.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Item 4.1, if the clerk would please report the correspondence.
John and Marilyn Pinkley sent a letter regarding parcel 22212-56-00032. The Liquor and Cannabis Board sent a liquor license application for Belfair State Park, 3151, State Route 300 in Belfair. Sue Ikes sent a letter resigning her position on the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging Board. And the Washington State Office of Financial Management sent a review of preliminary population estimates.
Thank you. Item 4.2, we have a proclamation for Amateur Radio Week 2017. Do we have a copy? Good question.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning. The Emergency Management Division of Mason County would like, requesting a proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners for Amateur Radio Week. And I'd like to read the proclamation if I could. Whereas the Federal Communications Licenses, all amateur radio operators who provide public and emergency communications, develop and maintain a pool of radio operators and promote domestic and international goodwill. And whereas Mason County has about 375 licensed amateur radio operators who have demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing emergency radio communications. And whereas these amateur radio operators donate their services free of charge to the county in the interest of the citizens of the county as well as the world. Whereas these amateur radio operators are on alert for any emergency, local or worldwide, and practice their communication skills during American Radio Relay League Field Day. Whereas this year's amateur radio field day will take place on Saturday, June 24th and Sunday, June 25th, 2017. And whereas amateur radio operators deserve our recognition and gratitude for the many services they provide. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Mason County, do hereby proclaim the week of June 19th through 25th, 2017 as Amateur Radio Week. I would like to add to this. We have a group that works in emergency management called the Communications Support Team. The hours that these folks put in doing the communications we need for our county, since our county has got quite a few mountains, quite a few dead spots that are there, we send these folks out in a communications van that has a microwave and a coffee pot and all these radios in it. And will be in there for 18 hours at a time doing communications for the sheriff's office and search and rescue, back to the EOC, and then also back to the state if need be. They do a fantastic job, and they do it for free. They are truly good citizens that we have here from the county that do this. And they don't ask much out of us. They ask occasionally for some equipment, but that is it. And they're always willing to step up at odd hours and on weekends when they are really needed. So I would, I'd like to put my two cents to this that they are some fantastic folks. I've got to meet them in my time here and actually socialize with them, and they are truly good people. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ross. Appreciate that, and appreciate all the volunteer hours that go into it.
I also appreciate the fact that anybody that volunteers, of course, has a heart, a good heart. To be able to match an incredible skill with that good heart in a way that truly helps people in a desperate situation such as search and rescue, these people go above and beyond. And thank you for acknowledging them and reminding us to acknowledge them each year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Ross. Item 4.3, we have a news release on county road chip seal and restriping.
Morning.
Morning.
Mason County Public Works would like to notify motorists at our annual restriping and resurfacing or chip seal. Of many county roadways will be in progress during the months of June, July, and August. Most of our county roads are restriped every year to improve nighttime reflectance. And this year's chip seal program will begin June 26th and finish by the end of July, weather permitting. And the 2017 chip seal program will cover approximately 38 miles of roadways throughout Mason County. Preparatory work is currently underway and will finish by the end of June when chip seal begins. A brooming of the roadway continues throughout chip seal and striping operations. Motorists are advised to expect delays, use caution while driving through the work area, and not drive across freshly painted lines. The county sheriff's department will be providing added traffic safety during chip seal and restriping. The county appreciates motorists taking extra care while this roadwork is in process. For a complete list of county roads being chip sealed or restriped, please visit the county website, www.co.mason.wad.us, under What's New, or call the Public Works Department at 360-427-9670, extension 450.
Thank you, Sarah. Just, if you could just say, preparatory work is currently underway. What kind of things should people see out there that might indicate that a road is going to be chip sealed or restriped?
So, most of our roads are going to be restriped. But for preparatory work, we're doing a lot of blade patching. And actually, this year, we have a lot of freeze thaw damage. So the roads that we're going to chip seal, we have a lot of preparatory works to remove the broken asphalt that occurred due to the freeze thaw events that we had earlier this year. So we'll see patches of asphalt. I know right now, we have everything marked out for the limits. So you might see little arrows for the sections that, painted on the road for the sections that we're going to chip seal. And also, you'll see little, like little rubber teepees almost, covering our monument cases. So those aren't spikes in the road, so they're just rubber. If you drive over them, it's okay. They're meant to be driven over. But those will allow us to make sure that our monuments are recovered after the chip seal process.
And you mentioned the, some of the challenges that we faced this winter. It was kind of a rough winter by comparison, and so appreciate everybody, it's, you didn't get a season off this year.
Yeah.
You know, so everybody's out and, you know, working hard during the winter and removing snow and sanding. And then now we get into the quote-unquote busy season for roadwork. So appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And then item 4.4, Public Works Bid Award Information.
Yes, so on August 12, 2008, county commissioners authorized the county engineer to advertise set bid opening date and time and award the contract for the Colom Road Improvement Project from approximately milepost 5.85 to 6.6. The date and time of opening was Friday, May 12, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. Six bids were received and opened at the Office of Mason County Commissioners. The contract has been awarded to the apparent low bidder, Active Construction, out of Tacoma, Washington, at their bid price of $2,123,123.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item number five. This is the open forum for citizen input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to come and address the commission on items that are not on today's agenda. If you have any comments, please come forward, and chair will recognize you.
Lynn Longan, Executive Director of the Economic Development Council of Mason County. Thank you for letting me address you today. I have a few things. I'm going to look at my notes to make sure I get everything. I just wanted to let you know that we just got back from taking a team last month to RECON, which is the world's largest retail trade show. And they had 37,000 attendees and over 2,500 exhibitors, primarily retail exhibitors. It was a great team. We're really busy following up with leads that we got, not just leads that we brought back, but people have been contacting the team. Hotels have been contacting us. They've looked at our area. They're interested, and they want to do follow-up with us. So I think we'll start to see some good things happening from that trade show. It's not often we can say that. So I would say this one has been very successful. Also, wanted to invite you to visit our new website, choosemason.com. We have a new website on there with a really nice site selector page, which will help us with business recruitment. Also, while you're there, fill out the customer, the public comment customer survey, because that's your chance to have a voice in the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. We're taking comment on that. We're going to be presenting a draft by the end of June, in just a couple weeks. And so trying to get as much public comment as we can. And last, oh yeah, last, I want to invite everyone to our ribbon cutting today. We're having a ribbon cutting at our new location, 310 West Cota Street, at 4:30 p.m. The Chamber of Commerce is helping us celebrate.
We're at a meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But everybody else?
Everyone else?
I wanted to be there badly.
Sorry.
And if you haven't had a chance to stop, and I'm sure both of you have had a chance to stop by the new office, but it's a great, great space, great to have you downtown.
Very comfortable and very appreciative to the PUD for making that space for us.
So as the commission is aware, and the public, some of the public may be aware, we entered into an agreement with a company called CGI Communications to do some video promotions of various aspects of Mason County. And one was, Mason County is a great place to bring your business. And we got to showcase your offices in that video. Those videos have now been approved after all the editing that we requested, and should be rolling out here pretty darn quick.
Good, thank you.
But you did a great job in that video.
Thanks for the opportunity to do that. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Carly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carly Watson. I live at 140 East Fox Lane. And about two weeks ago, I did open my mouth and say that a permit was needed for storage containers. And I've done a little research on that. As you can see, it started on the white page, it started in 1897. And the last two weeks, I've opened my mouth, and every two years since 1911, 22 years ago, since they did the previous additions, supplements and datings are printed dated 1897, and the current laws are CWs, are downstairs in the library. I chose the electrical, because I'm very familiar with that. I did that in Los Angeles on the two twin-story buildings where they came in and what they did, they reduced the controls down so that children that were in a wheelchair could reach the buttons. They had a field day with that, believe me. And the electrical, which I'm very familiar with, we reduced, because the wheelchair, we reduced the switches down to three feet, and we raised the plugs up to two feet. And you can see there, and it's been two years, you can see on there, the yellowish-green one was the last meeting we had, was June 18, 2013, where Deborah Cocker was here. And we discussed great detail on the storage containers. And she made a point, and I assumed that she did some research on it, going back. And we came to the conclusion that if you needed a light out in their storage container, you would, you'd have to get a permit. And if water was needed out there, again, a permit was needed. Thank you. Any questions?
And that's still the case.
Yes, and you can do, the last white sheet was dated 2014, so we're due for some changes. If, and it goes back to fire, which started in 1897, and then they've added fire, electrical, plumbing, earthquake, water, you name it, they've added it. Amputation, wheelchair, or exempt, and just everything like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carly, you. Tom?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Davis, I'm a resident of District Two in Mason County. And I'm going to preface my remarks as saying, I normally don't like people to give opinions and then leave for the rest of the meeting, which is exactly what I have to do. So I apologize for that beforehand, but we have a couple of guys in jail that need some attention. So I'm here to talk just for a moment on the RFP process for the contracts, for the one, that are funded by the 1/10th or 1% fund, sales tax for mental health and therapeutic court purposes. And I just wondered, when you assess this, when the panel, and I understand that you have a panel that assesses the RFPs and decides on what award and what the amount should be. And there's a certain component or an element there that I'd like for you to consider, and that is a value element, and the value of relationships. There's, as you know, I work with one of the particular entities that have submitted a proposal. Like there are good candidates and then good elected officials, they're not necessarily the same people. And like people who write very good and conclusive, comprehensive proposal, may or may not deliver the goods that they propose to deliver. But the opposite is also true. The emphasis, I work with veterans, and there's a particular entity that works with veterans, and they're culturally competent, meaning that their staff, for the most part, or a large part, is veterans. And I work with one particular 23-year-old, 23, who has service for 23 years in the military. And we do a whole bunch of things that normally are not listed on proposals. And our relationships over the last six years now with the WDVA and the VA and the various other entities that serve the general population is invaluable. Those things don't show up on a proposal. And they tend to be overlooked and maybe not looked at in terms of value as it relates to performance. To date, we have, and the particular individual, myself, have worked with 58 people intensively just on this, on Veterans Court, which we run our efforts parallel to the regular Veterans Court. And we have only had two cases of recidivism, and both of those were, occurred while the two defendants were in Veterans Courts. We have a pretty good track record. We have a pretty good reputation with the entire veteran community, not only here, but other jurisdictions as well. And we work very hard to build these relationships. Relationships, and something that I'm new, kind of new to, I'm an entrepreneur who just does things the way I like to do them. And if you don't like it, then I find somebody who will. So relationships are not my strong suit. But at the same time, the other half of this team, relationships are his particular strong suit. So it makes a very good whole. I do the advocacy for the veterans in court, and I propose particular veterans that should be eligible to alternatives for incarceration, like Veterans Court. And the other person is a caseworker who's very intensive. We do everything, from soup to nuts, up to and including transporting people to their various outstanding warrants, and to feeding their cats in their trailer, if that's what it takes. Whatever it takes, we are all in. That's not something you see in a proposal. So I just wanted to make you aware that there's more to this than just what you read on the paper. And as I said, and I'll just repeat it once, sometimes people are good at writing proposals, sometimes people are good at delivering performance. And I'd appreciate it if you'd consider that and give that some weight, or at least whatever weight you deem appropriate. And I have to run, just thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
No save a vet, my friend.
Okay, anyone else for comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six, is the adoption of our agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt today's agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Item number seven, we have approval of minutes for June 6th and 13th, 2017, regular meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Chair, move that we approve those minutes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from June 6th and June 13th, 2017. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Takes us to item eight, which is the approval of our action agenda. At this time, Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda. After, at that point, I would entertain a Commissioner or a citizen wishing to remove an item for a separate vote and discussion. Commissioner Jeffries, if you would please take item 8.1 and 2. Commissioner Netherland, 8.3 and 4. And then I will take 8.5 and 6.
Mr. Chair, item 8.1 reads, approval of the warrants, Claims Clearing Fund warrants, 804-9147 through 804-9178, totaling $28,159.59. Direct Deposit Fund warrants, numbers 41418 through 41822, totaling $676,889.48. Salary Clearing Fund warrants, 7002822 through 7002863, totaling $961,858.79. Approval of the Treasure Electronic Remittances, BaseCom on 5317, totaling $93,448.2. The Mental Health Fund, assuming Mental Health, 51017, totaling $61,322.58. And the Community Health and Social Services Fund on 51017, totaling $592.54. Per grand total, approval of $1,821,808.80. Item 8.2, approval to set a hearing for Tuesday, July 11, 2017, at 9:30 a.m., to receive public comment on a private line occupancy permit, granting permission to run water and septic transport lines under East Island Lake Drive for parcel 32006-50-02116.
Mr. Chairman, item number 8.3 reads, approval to sign the resolution for County Road Project CRP 2011, North Island Drive Culvert Replacement Project, and approval to authorize the Public Works County Engineer to advertise, set bid dates, times, and award contract. Contract award will be announced during a regular meeting of the Board. Item number 8.4, approval to set a hearing for July 11, 2017, at 9:30 a.m., to adopt, to adopt an ordinance adjusting the 2009 land use permit fees to reflect current costs for services outlined on the planning fee revision chart.
Item 8.5, approval to sign the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant Application for 2017-2018 in the amount of $22,000. Item 8.6, approval to sign and execute the contract with Kelly Siago to provide indigent defense in district court, and approval to authorize Frank Pinter to sign the contract on behalf of the county. Having read through the items on today's action agenda, is there a Commissioner or a citizen that would like an item removed for a separate voter discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the action agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's action agenda as presented. Any additional discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just call out on item 8.5, this is our approval to sign the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant Application. This year, we're receiving $22,000, a significant reduction in what we've been receiving year after year, every year it reduces. But I just wanted to share that this year's, in your planning for using those monies is required, an effort to try to address the disproportionate population of juvenile who are, their race is disproportionate to the race of the county. And I just really appreciate and want to call out Jim Madsen and your staff's efforts to reach out to address our native population in the special ways that's culturally competent to the needs there. And I loved the example that he shared, and if you don't mind, I'd like to share that of, normally when a juvenile, anybody's being incarcerated, all their private belongings are removed from them. In this, I believe it's Comish tribe, they have a tradition of having comfort blankets, issued out to children and families. And I can just imagine how symbolic that is to then translate into a spiritual and emotional comfort when you're in a time of crises. And just the simple act of understanding the cultural context around those blankets and allowing those juveniles to take those into their cell, I think is a small but profound example of what can be done to be culturally competent and how we are treating our juveniles of a minority race. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Takes us to item number nine on our agenda, Other Business. Item 9.1, Appointment of the Chief Public Defender Position, effective June 20, 2017.
Mr. Chair, we had a call, I'm sorry.
I think Frank is, great.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Commissioners. The commission has interviewed four of five qualified applicants for the chief public defender position. One of the five declined their interview as they had already taken a position at another agency. You have a list of candidates in front of you. Please refer to the candidates as numbers 1, 2 through 5 in discussions amongst yourselves. And after consensus, I would approach that selected candidate to inform them of your decision. Also, if you would please indicate at which step in range 43 you would like to make the offer for the position at.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioners, entertain discussion.
We're very fortunate to have a good slate of candidates to interview. All of them brought, in my opinion, some pretty great ideas, which was really helpful. And we've noted each of them for ways to both improve and improve our public defense services, as well as save some money and address issues of a limit on the number of cases that each public defender can have. I appreciated especially candidate number two's willingness to step up from a private practice to this position, and as well as the interim help he's given. I do have a, somebody I'd like to nominate, but I'd be happy to hear, I'd like to nominate, well, I'd like to hear some other comments.
Sure. Commissioner?
I can tell you, you know, I agree, number two, we need to say thank you for stepping up during such a hard time. Of course, number four, the right-of-way Of course, number four, the right away when things started happening, that was pretty telling when this person stepped up with some great ideas very quickly when we were going through our changes. It's hard not to notice and recognize and appreciate that.
Yeah, I would concur. As Commissioner Jeffrey said, we had a number of qualified applicants that came forward and each brought, I think, a little bit of a different or a unique perspective to the role. And, you know, do appreciate everybody stepping forward. However, it is my opinion that one candidate rose to the top amongst all of these strong interview candidates. And so I look forward to hearing a nomination and moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Peter Jones to be the chief public defender for Mason County. Peter brought, again, during a period where we didn't have a permanent chief public defender, he brought a spirit of cooperation, collaboration. I certainly appreciate that. Brought a lot of ideas and opinions that we could potentially put into place even before we chose a director. And Peter showed us his willingness to think outside the box, to do what it takes, to go above and beyond, even to the function of upgrading the spreadsheets just so you can have an idea of who has what cases. Peter, you've done a tremendous job of just stepping up and trying to, working to make that office the best it can be. But most importantly, in my mind, Peter believes in the profession he's chosen and the line and the area he's chosen. And that passion, I think, will create a tremendously invigorated staff and probably one of the best public defense offices in the state.
I will second. And I will say again, it's interesting enough, he's what we were talking about a moment ago. We went through some hard times. But before those hard times occurred, we had a lot of questions. We were pushing to try and find ways to do waiting, to do things that we thought would be beneficial to this county and to help us to get through some financial times we were going. And it was like pushing a rock uphill. And then one day, we actually just asked the question while he was sitting on the other side for none of, had nothing to do with any of that at the time. And all of a sudden, they just started rolling out, all kinds of, I do have ideas. I do know how we can do it. I do. And I remember that particular day, that was the day I already assumed eventually he may move up into that position. So I proudly second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Peter Jones to the position of chief public defender. I would also like to just mention a few things if I could before calling for the vote. I think what we heard in the interviews and came to find out later, I've had a limited opportunity to work with him in my short time here so far, but it was that outside the box thinking, it was that ability to provide constructive criticism, it was that ability to identify not only problems but solutions, which I think is so critical in any leadership position. And I also think after hearing some of the things that others had to say was also very important. Peter's a man of integrity. He's a person that works very hard to build relationships with others and goes above and beyond the call of duty, not as an exception but as a rule. And when we look for leaders in Mason County, when we look for people who step forward and take on additional responsibility, it's my belief that those are the qualities that we're looking for the most. And so I am very happy to support this nomination. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.
Congratulations. Didn't know that was coming when you got here, did you?
Okay. Oh, and then, yeah, so then we'll also then entertain a motion for the step in range.
I think the recommendation, maybe we can have a discussion first, it was step one, obviously.
Frank had mentioned it already, the range.
Yeah, range 43, step one.
I would concur. I would second. There was another nomination.
I will make a motion, range 43, step one.
And I'll second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that we offer the position at range 43, step one. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. Having passed the time of 9:30, we can move on to item number 10, which is our public hearing. Item 10.1, public hearing to consider supplemental and budget transfer requests to the 2017 budget.
So we have our second.
Jennifer, could you introduce yourself?
Sorry, Jennifer Sleva, budget manager. So we have our second hearing for budget supplementals. Most of the supplemental requests that are on this second request are to meet the needs of contracts for, excuse me, salary contracts for the salary raise increases for, that were under contract and negotiation this year. So, and then additional grant revenue that was for grants for the RCO grant for the North Mason Soccer Field and the Department of Ecology Community Liter grant for the sheriff's office. So they shouldn't, those two should, we should be very excited to be having. So with that being said, whereas the notice was published and a public hearing will be held today for RCW 36.4.100 and RCW 36.10.195 and with resolution 29.17, the Board of County Commissioners in Mason County hopefully will hereby approve the following budget supplemental appropriation requests and transfer requests. Budget supplemental request to the 27th budget as follows. $485,300 for RCO grant 45-1581, $67,110 for Department of Ecology Community Liter Grant Services, $3,000 for .001.070 miscellaneous revenue for administrative offices of the courts reimbursement, and $3,000 for overtime expenses for administrative office of the courts and budget transfers to the 27th, excuse me, 2017 budget as follows. $207,300, excuse me, $207,353,027 from ending fund balance to, excuse me, 001.320 to the assessors, 001.020 auditor, 001.030, emergency management, 001.050, clerk, 001.070, district court, 001.010, prosecutor, 001.180, superior court, 001.250, and treasurer, 001.260. Transfers from auditors O and M 104 to auditors expense 104.514. Transfer from county roads 105 to county roads expense 105.543/544. Transfers from ERNR 501 to ERNR expense. Transfer from treasurers M and O 180 to expense 180.514. Not enough? There's just a lot, a lot of accounts. Any questions?
I don't have any.
Can I share?
No. Did you, did you hear? Well, let's do it in the motion.
Okay.
Pardon me?
I didn't hear the.
The BECA.
Oh.
$485,000 increase budget, RCO grant 14-15.
Did I miss it? Oh.
I heard that, I thought you had checked next to the BECA grant.
No, no.
Oh, and the BECA.
But I heard the, I heard the RCO grant.
I did.
I heard 45, but.
Did I miss the BECA grant transfers? Okay. And the BECA grant transfers, I did miss the BECA grant transfers. Do you want me to read them out for you too? Okay. I do see them up there, the BECA grant transfers. And the BECA grant transfers are for the grant revenue to move within the funds to, so that we can fully expend the grant. They were distributed evenly across departments, and we're basically moving them so that the grant can be expended by a department that is able to expend them. And it's because their grant year ends on June 30th, and then they start a new grant year because of the state year ends on June 30th. So we're just moving those funds to the department that can fully expend them. So the ones for this, they're the state fiscal year that ends on June 30th. So that's the only reason we're moving those funds over them.
Before I open for public comment, are there any additional questions for staff?
I just wanted to verify, so those transfers, the BECA transfers, were they, I don't see them in what you had read out. And so I wanted to verify that in a motion, we'll need to reread the, we'll need to read through those.
Do we need to read them? Are they not in the request down below? Hereby, the supplemental appropriation requests for budget transfers, RCO grant.
Let's see, the total amount.
Transfers, clerk, assessors, transfers. You're right, they're not in the transfer request at the bottom.
We can take care of that in the motion.
Yeah, it's just missing in the order. I'll double check and make sure they're in the order for publication.
It is actually included in the budget transfer, if we were to make a motion and actually read the actual whole document, we can verify it correctly.
Let me make sure they're not missing in the order that was published, though. I'll have to make sure, because if they're missing in the, they were in the supplemental on the top, but I'll have to make sure that they didn't get missed in the order.
We don't have a copy of that, do we?
No, it would have been a couple of weeks ago, it would have gone in that order. I'll have to check on that.
I would recommend you just do it by motion.
They would have gone, they're in the, yeah.
But we can do it by motion, but include it all the way through. Are you requesting specific language for reverification? To re-verify or use, or?
Yes, yes, to validate that it.
I will need to validate that it was, that it was published.
To validate that it was in the order.
Mm-hmm, that it was in the original order that was published. Which it should have been, but I will double check.
There are no other questions, I'll open for public comment, period. If you would like to make a comment on the supplemental transfers, please come forward, and the chair will recognize you. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we were to make a motion to cover everything, would you recommend that we perhaps read the whole page and then add that as the motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then, go ahead and start, I guess. Everybody got your lunchbox? All right. Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the supplemental requests and budget transfers as I'm about to read. Supplemental requests, $485,300 increased budget from RCO grant 14-1581 to North Mason Soccer Field revenue and expense. $67,110 increased budget from DOE Community Liter Grant Revenue and Expenses. $3,000 increased budget from clerk miscellaneous revenue, administrator office of the courts reimbursement. $3,000 increased budget for clerk overtime expense, administrative office of the courts. Budget transfers, $29,319 transfer of BECA grant revenue and expense funds from indigent defense, $10,000 clerk, $5,000 prosecutor, $6,000, wait, $10,000 clerk, $5,000 prosecutor, $6,000 in detention of $8,319 to juvenile. $207,353.27 transfer from ending fund balance to assessors, $32,649.13 cents, auditor, $42,203.67, emergency management, $11,137.90, clerk, $45,599.31, district court, $31,699.96, prosecutor, $22,324.94, superior court, $256, and treasurer, $21,455.36 salaries and benefits. $2,453.89 transfer from auditor O and M 104, restricted beginning fund balance to salaries and benefits. $24,100 transfer from county roads 105, restricted beginning fund balance to salaries and benefits. $1,650 transfer from ERNR 501, restricted beginning fund balance to salaries and benefits. $6,088.47 transfer from treasurers M and O, number 180, unassigned fund balance to salaries and benefits. $51,300 transfer from ending fund balance to $35,000 LNI compliance testing, $15,800 LT corporal testing, 500 LT corporal testing cost. I also included in the motion that this motion is predicated on the validation that each of these items were placed into the order that was published.
Frank is.
I just confirmed it was in the order.
So, Commissioner, if you could start from the beginning.
That's the most important part.
So the motion still stands, it's already, and it's already been validated, so we should be fine?
Publication's the important part. I will second that motion.
That doesn't seem fair.
Just for the next couple of months, keep away from that, our warrants.
People could just make these smaller and consolidate these numbers. It would make so much more.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the supplemental and budget transfer requests to the 2017 budget as stated. Any additional discussion?
None.
Just again, to, for the public's verification, most of these transfers, about $250,000 of them, from our ending fund balance to the various departments are to increase the salaries of our union, our employees that are represented by collective bargaining units as per the agreed-upon contracts. So these are, that's why we're doing all these transfers now, because these contracts were not completed at the time of the budget.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Item number 11, board reports and calendar. If Commissioner Netherland would get us started.
Sure. We had briefings after our last meeting, including support services, and we had discussed many of the different financial issues that we had throughout the county. Had a housing coalition meeting, voter access committee, which is pretty interesting. Frank, remind me, we need to talk, I've got a couple of things we need to fix for access into the building for voters. Mr. Atkinson from North Mason, met with different constituents regarding different areas. Also had an audit committee meeting, and brings us to our briefings again. After this meeting, we have a special staff meeting that will occur, which we will all be there. Mason Transit Authority meeting, I think we will all be there. Planning Commission joint meeting, of which I think we will all be there. Couple more meetings with constituents, I haven't set it up yet, but I need to speak with Dave Wyndham in regards to some of the things that they're needing up in North Mason there. North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, Union City Lodge meeting. I'll be meeting with Derek Commerce folks, brings us back to our briefing. I have a North Mason Community Voice meeting next Monday, which is interesting, our times have changed so much that I actually get texts while we're sitting here at the meeting from people that are watching out there, that are telling me, I don't like this, I don't like that. In this particular case, it was a text saying, don't you forget to mention North Mason Community Voice meeting that you will be there.
What's the topic?
I have no idea, but I was told I have to be there.
He did it.
I will be there someday.
You're the guest speaker.
Yeah, let's hope not. Anybody that knows me, I try to avoid those. And that, and that brings us back to our regular meeting.
Commissioner Jeffries?
So, let's see, following last week's meeting, we had a support services briefing. I had my regularly monthly agenda setting meeting with the Mason Transit Authority. Wednesday, the 14th, we had a meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Olympic Region Clean Air Authority to do an evaluation of Fran McNair, and it was a glowing, glowing review based on all of the members of the ORCA board. Then we had a regular ORCA meeting, and then we had the annual meeting of the Hood Canal Corning Council. And we had, then Thursday, the 15th, we had a meeting of the Mason County Law, Justice, and Behavioral Health in our effort to. and Behavioral Health in our effort to have good collaboration and seamless collaboration between our criminal justice professionals and our behavioral health service providers and contractors. I had a meeting with the Director of the Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council regarding a memorandum of understanding that is needing to be signed for something called one-stop shopping, in which somebody seeking employment will also have access based on contracts with, or agreements with service providers to other types of services that would support their, their job search. And then we had a special meeting of the Behavioral Health Organization to, we are now in the process, in the effort to completely separate the Behavioral Health Organization from Thurston County, which at one point, especially when it was a regional support network, it was basically a department, of their public health department. And we want to separate them completely, and which means that all of the employees will need to be laid off and rehired if, if they go through this process. And we had to start with, we have to start with the first one, and that's the executive director. And then from then on, all the other hires can go on. So we had a special meeting to discuss his qualifications and a potential compensation package. Hope you have, all you fathers had a great Father's Day. We had our commission briefings yesterday, and then we will have, this afternoon, we'll have, I'll have a meeting with Dave Wyndham also on some other topics. We have the Mason Transit Authority meeting and our joint meeting with the Planning Advisory Committee. And then I am going to take a little bit of time off, I have a wedding on Friday, the twenty-third, and then I'll be.
Not just in.
I'm saying, what's the name of that person?
I married a wonderful gentleman named Robert Drexler, and so at some point, this will be changed, and I'll take on his name. And then we're going to take a quick little honeymoon, so I will be taking Monday off. But in between all that, I'm going to grab a meeting with Lewis Mason Thurston Air Agency on aging.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's pretty incredible. I feel like a teenager again.
Well, I don't know how to follow that. But I'll try. Last week, we had the Hood Canal Coordinating Council Annual Retreat, Commissioner Jeffries was there. I think there was a positive and robust conversation about some of the issues that the coordinating council might want to take on, not just in this year, but even, even looking beyond this year a little bit. So a good forward-thinking opportunity for us there, was happy to get up to Kingston, up in northern, North Kitsap County, so it was a nice drive up there as well. So also had Legislative Steering Committee conference call, get an update from the Association of Counties on what's happening in Olympia, or maybe more accurately, what's not happening in Olympia. Today is day twenty-nine of thirty of the second special session. We have another conference call coming up this week on what will potentially be the first day of the third special session. So a lot of issues still being worked out there as we kind of come down to the wire here at the end of the year. So we still have the McCleary issue, the K-12 school funding issue that's outstanding. Some new revenue is still being debated back and forth between the House and the Senate. Then, of course, the Hearst decision that would have a large impact on rural development, and so another issue that we're all kind of keeping an eye on to see how exactly that will be resolved and when. So there are still some, some big issues there. It's, it's interesting, if you talk to some people, it's, we're going to get this done in the next ten days. Talk to other people, there's no chance we're going to get this. So my guess is we're somewhere in the middle there. Safe bet there, but we'll, we'll keep posted on that and keep track of what happens in Olympia. I also attended the semi-annual meeting of the Skokomish Watershed Action Team out at the Skokomish Grange, tackling a lot of different issues. There were representatives there from Congressman Kilmer's office, as well as Senators Murray and Cantwell, their offices, U.S. Forest Service, and then a lot of, a lot of concerned residents out in the valley were there, too. It was a, a good meeting, talked about a lot of the issues that they're facing and some of the projects that are happening out in the, in the valley to, to address some of those issues. So I appreciated getting out for that. Today, we also, as Commissioner Netherland had stated, and Commissioner Jeffries, we have kind of a full day of joint meetings. Mason Transit this afternoon, then the Planning Commission, really looking forward to the Planning Commission meeting. We're all Planning Commission alumni, and so we, we understand the work and effort that has to go into those meetings. And I think we're really looking forward to having an opportunity to sit down and talk about the direction they're heading and get an update on their work, and then maybe offer some insight into some areas that we think deserve some additional attention. Also have the Criminal Justice Working Team meeting later this week. Our county health officer, Dr. Yu, will be coming to give us an update on some of her efforts tackling the opioid epidemic that we have here in Mason County, but not just here, it's, it's, unfortunately, it's everywhere. And so, but Dr. Yu is very committed to working through some of those issues, and so she's going to give us an update. Also this weekend, I'll be out at the Amateur Radio Field Day. Got to give credit to that group, they invited me back in like March, which is great, because the, in March, you think, there's no way your June calendar can fill up, and then, lo and behold, sure does. Then I'll also be attending the Rainbow Lake Homeowners Association meeting on Saturday morning, talk about some nuisance ordinances and work that our, our county code enforcement folks are doing to help, give them some relief on that end. I also, the commission would just kind of indulge me for a moment. This week, my wife Catherine and I began to say goodbye to our two exchange students, and this, maybe not so much for the people in this room, but hopefully try to drive some international clicks for, you know, communications. So if you just give me an indulgence, this, this week, we began to say goodbye to our two exchange students, they've been with us since August. Hannah is now sixteen, she's from Germany, and Monica is eighteen, and she's from Poland, and they have been a tremendous addition to our family this year. Catherine and I don't yet have kids of our own, and so this was quite an undertaking for us, and they were an absolute delight to have as a part of our family. And they came into, they came into the United States at a challenging time. There was a lot of, you know, there, it came into a contentious election, certainly had to live it on the home front with me and some of the things that I was doing last year, but, you know, they, they came in and they embraced what it is to be an American teenager. And I can't say enough about the North Mason School District community that welcomed them with open arms. It was really, it was really exciting to watch them embrace Mason County and life in rural America, which I think is a unique experience among, in the middle of a very unique experience overall that they were having. They did everything from drama to being on the bowling team, to musical, to, you know, dragging them to debates and town halls, and they didn't complain at all. They just, they did a fantastic job at taking in every moment. And Catherine and I are going to miss them very, very much. But what we do know for sure is that we wouldn't have had the experience that we had had it not been for their parents. Their parents should be very proud of the daughters that they're, that they've raised. They've raised two very strong-willed, independent young women that will have a very, very bright future. And as we say goodbye to them, we know that they're going to go on to do great things. And so to Monica and Hannah, thank you for making this year very, very special for Catherine and me. We'll see you soon, so.
Bon voyage, Monica and Catherine.
And just for clarification, I got a text, I am not the guest speaker.
Well, that's a relief. I mean, I have to read through those budget transfers.
It is for me, I'll tell you. Wonderful people, I just hate doing that stuff. The wrong business.
All right, well, very good. Well, that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
And I'll second.
We're adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.